Yeah.
At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone here this evening. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we're operating under that agenda. I'll ask city clerk Kyle Box to take the role.
Mayor Burns.
Here.
Craig Schaefer.
Here.
Steve Meister.
Here.
Don Edblum.
Here.
John De Kramer.
Here.
Russ LaBatt.
Here.
Jim Wazinski.
Here.
Members are all present. The we'll move then to agenda number two. Then I'm number two is consider the approval of the minutes of the previous work sessions and the regular council meeting held on May 11, 2021. So the council council does have the minutes of those meetings. Are there any corrections to note?
Move to approve second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to vote. Kyle, would you take the role?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Wazinski.
Yes.
And motion passes. Then I have number three is a public hearing on Sounds of Summer 2021. It's a public hearing on the private use of public streets and parking lots on August 19th to 23rd, 2021, as well as approval of the private use of the public streets and parking lots. At 309 Brussels Court. No, that was not it. So just the first one. So approval of the parking lots during that time. With that, Kyle, do you have this? Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. Go ahead. Okay, um, thank you. This is a the request from the Sounds of Summer Committee that I think looks largely like it does most years with one exception. This for the Sounds of Summer Festival, obviously. August 19th through the 23rd. They would like to close West College Drive from Maine to Saratoga, as well as Marvin Schwann from West College Drive to South First Street. I think this is how they typically do it as well on Friday, August 20th from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM and again on Saturday from 6:00 AM to 3:00 AM. They would also like to do closures on Lion Street for parade lineup beginning at the corner of Neuse Lane all the way to Jewett Street on Saturday from noon to 5:00 PM. And then the parade itself would have a closure of East Lion from Bruce to Maine and a closure of Maine from East Lion to North Sixth Street on the 21st from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. The the part of the request that I think looks different from most years is the committee is asking to use the Whitney Lot behind the downtown businesses for use of their event from Thursday, August 19th to Monday, August 23rd. You can see it on that attached area. That's the Whitney Lot. I think the idea is that the area in blue is used for most of the time, but there would be a period of time where the whole lot is used. But I think for most of the time, they're going to try to keep it into that blue area to allow for some circulation and traffic. I know the committee did go in front of the Downtown Business Association on May 5th regarding this issue. And I don't believe that they heard too much objection, but I we I know we have members of the committee in attendance and maybe it's best if they say a couple of words if they'd like or and the council can address some questions to them as well.
Okay, thank you, Jason. For the public hearing, is there any other any comments or from members of the Sounds of Summer Committee if you'd like to make comment?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Due to the fact that we can't use the Schwann's parking lot this year, that's why we're moving it into the Whitney parking lot. Schwann's campuses are closed. They've been willing to work with us, but at this time, we're not able to use that parking lot. So where we filed it in the past. So this is hopefully only a temporary thing for this year. We did have a meeting with the downtown businesses. We are going to try keep that back parking lot open as long as we can. Just so they have traffic to go through there and then they'll allow them into their businesses. So I don't think we've heard. I mean, unless Russ has maybe heard anything, but I've heard everybody's in a positive mold if you get Sounds of Summer for this year. So.
Okay. Any other input as part of the public hearing? Thank you, Mark. If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Wazinski.
Yes.
And a motion passes. The second action then would be consider the approval of the private use of the public streets and the parking lots. August 19th to 23rd. Questions about this? If not, is there a motion?
I'm so moved.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Epstein.
Jim Wazinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. And the third action then would be to consider the approval of the parade route on August 21st.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Epstein.
Jim Wazinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Thank you. Move then to agenda number four. This is also a public hearing regarding the home property tax abatement request. The location is 309 Brussels Court. Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor. Tash, in your packet this evening, you can see that the public hearing was called for at the last council meeting to be held tonight. The property information, the value indifference improvement is located in the background material as long as well as the estimated amount of assistance. I can answer any questions if there are any.
Are there any questions? If there are no questions, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
Motion by Don, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Wazinski.
Yes.
And a motion passes. So the action item then would be the consideration of the resolution that would approve the home property tax abatement. Are there any questions about the resolution? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Wazinski.
Epstein.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening. And they include consider the authorization to declare bicycles a surplus property for the Marshal Police Department, consider the authorization to declare vehicles a surplus property for the Marshal Police Department to declare the unclaimed evidence as surplus property from the Merit Center lease with Minnesota West Community and Technical College calling for the hearing regarding the proposed property tax abatement at 600 Elizabeth Street. Consider the approval of the transient merchant license for KT's fireworks. Consider the approval of temporary on sale intoxicating liquor license for Holy Redeemer Church for August 18, 2021. Consider the application for exempt permits, three of them, for Holy Redeemer Church. Consider the approval out of state travel. Consider the request of Southwest Minnesota State University for the Homecoming Parade Saturday, October 9, 2021, and to consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion? Item five, please. Any other?
Number eight, please.
Other item?
Number six.
With that, is there a motion to approve the rest of the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Don, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Wazinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda number five, and I believe we do have Director of Public Safety, Jim Marshall here in attendance that could address this. John, you have a question?
Yeah, I just asked that before the any bikes go to altars for disposal that some of the same groups be contacted that we have in the past as far as getting those to kids that need a bikes and things like that. So. Chief Marshall.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, we will do that. Typically what we do, if there's a value to any bikes, we'll reach out to the school district and try to reach those families in need that have a need for those bikes. So we'll do that first if there's value to them.
All right. Thank you. Good. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve item five on our. Second.
A motion by John, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Wazinski.
Yes.
And a motion passes. Agenda number six, the authorization to declare vehicles a surplus property for Marshal Police Department. Jim? Um, just to touch base on vehicles, are we, how do we get rid of these with the shortage of used vehicles? And surprisingly, we got burned Paula that the city sold. I mean, we got a lot of money for that. You know, I looked at this 2014 Silverado is in any decent shape. These things are worth money now.
Right. You know, some of them obviously aren't and some of the ones that are abandoned vehicles, we typically will take them to either the news will come and take care of them for us or we'll take them to Alter Metal for, you know, a minor amount of money, what we get back on those vehicles. This 2014 is kind of a unique situation, right? There should be value to that vehicle. We don't know a lot about it. It was taken into our possession in February. We reached out to the registered owners of the vehicle. I received response back from one of those individuals and that was in February and we outlined the process in which they needed to follow to reclaim that vehicle and we've heard nothing since. So what we're doing is we're just asking to that we can move forward in this process. I mean, I think once we do that, we don't have keys to the vehicle. We really don't know the condition other than it was left. It was abandoned. I think what we would do at that point in time is have one of our mechanics or city mechanics take a look at it to see if there's value, if there's, if we go forward and get the vehicle rekeyed and see if it starts to see if it runs, you know, start to invest a lot of money into vehicles that we just don't know a lot about. But I think what we'll do is we'll have our mechanic take a look at it at that point and decide what they want to do and discern and we gotta, if we sell it or if there's a repurpose it with the city, I don't know. Maybe reach out to the equipment committee if that happens.
Perfect. I'll make motion to approve it. Motion by Jim, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Wazinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda number eight, the Merit Center lease. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a problem with the with the with the lease or anything else, but reading through the documents, I did not find anything and I could have missed it. You know, recently our fire department took over the the hazmat stuff. So just curious, are we able to continue to store the hazmat equipment out there? Or what's the status of that? I mean, it's 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 a big enough facility. I would think that we should be able to store that equipment, those vehicles or vehicles out there. Just question. I don't know if it's for Sharon or or Jason or whoever, but.
Right. And I don't know if that necessarily falls under this this lease, but yeah, we've had discussion, you know, that we have moved our transition, the chemical assessment team in the fire department and our fire chief Quentin Brunzold is here today. Some of the equipment we transitioned over to the fire department during COVID during when they had this as a testing site. And I think we're just trying to decide what works best for the chemical assessment team, the CAT team. There's obviously some items that we're going to have to keep at the merit center and there'll probably be storage fees that go with that. So there will be revenues continually coming into the merit center from the chemical assessment team. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, yes, it does. I was just curious if we if we were still able to use the use the facility for that equipment storage. That's all. Thank you, Jim.
Okay.
With that, I'll propose a motion, make a motion to accept.
Motion by Russ.
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Wazinski.
Yes.
Motion passes. Move then to agenda number 16, consider the memorandum of understanding between the City of Marshall and Bird Scooters. I believe Lauren Deitz, our EDA director is on the line. Lauren, I'll.
Thank you, Mayor. So City of Marshall was approached about a month ago by Bird Scooters. It's a company based out of California. And we do have Mike Butler with us here this evening and he'll be going through a presentation on the program. But basically they're looking to bring 50 to 75 electric scooters to Marshall for it'd be free use of the city charged to the customer. They would have a fleet manager on site that would monitor the program and make sure it's successful. At this time, they're looking to just launch a trial period in Marshall. Kind of for both parties benefit. Bird wants to see if it would be successful. And of course, on the city side, we want to see what areas might have challenges and how we could address that during that trial period to see if it's something we would want to continue long term. Some other communities similar to our size are starting to adopt this program. I saw this week that Albert Lee officially received their scooters. New Ulm, I think, is also considering the program as well as Grand Murray and others throughout Minnesota. We have reached out to several groups to discuss this program, one of which was SMSU. And they were in full support of the program. They thought it would be a benefit to their students and their population who lives on campus, even during summer months when there's not as many students around. We also reached out to Western Community or UCAP, Western Community Action. They were not concerned about this affecting their ridership. We also talked to our Downtown Association. They were probably the most apprehensive. Their apprehension came behind just the use and and what the program would look like. I think there would be some logistics that we need to figure out to make sure that we keep the program neat and tidy and that it is functional for downtown businesses. So with that, I will hand it over to Mike and let him walk through his presentation and we can open it up for questions at the end.
Hey, thank you, Lauren. Mr. Butler, you're welcome to our meeting.
Yes, thank you. I will, I'll share my screen. I'll 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 share this for about five or seven minutes and it'll open up for for any questions as I'm sure I'll have dozens of questions and things of that nature. So let me make sure that everyone can see this. Just one second. Everyone view this?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Well, yeah, as Laura mentioned, my name is Mike. I run a lot of the the local and municipal partnerships in the area. So for those that may be unfamiliar with Bird, you perhaps have seen these in some other more dense, larger metropolitan areas. We are a dockless electric vehicle company. Our our goal is to make cities more livable, bring this new environmentally friendly and eco-friendly mode of transportation to members of the community and cities just like Marshall. We, excuse me, we started this business in in 2017. We were actually the first company in the world to to start this 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 concept. It didn't exist before this. We're which made us the fastest company to a billion dollar valuation. So there was the the product really took off in the first couple of years and we're currently live in about 160 cities across the globe, which spans a couple of different continents, dozens of countries. And you know, we we learned what what we did well and and obviously making adjustments as well because we're still a somewhat younger company. The way that it works and the way that it would work in in Marshall is you'd walk up to a vehicle that was strategically placed on the sidewalk. You would download the application if you hadn't already. You would scan the vehicle using your phone and you would take it for a ride wherever you were going. So this could be recreational. It could just be a nice day outside. So you're wanting to get some fresh air. Or it could be more of a utility. We're actually looking to get from A to B. And then when you're done, you park it back on the sidewalk, someone comes up, picks up and does the exact same thing. And this is a dockless model, so we don't have set stations, which means that we don't are not we're not asking for any sort of construction or infrastructure that's required within the cities. You can see here that vehicles will be parked in in the furniture zone. So easily able to, you know, conveniently pick it up and take it for a ride. But you can also see on the left hand side of that photo, still ADA compliant, someone in a wheelchair, someone walking, someone in crutches, didn't matter. It could easily breeze by. And we they follow the same exact rules as as a bicycle does. Now, we've had to implement a lot of different strategies to support different cities. So cities like Chicago, cities like Kansas City, cities like Minneapolis. You know, almost every neighborhood there has its own set of rules. So we've had to deploy technology to support that. So if there were certain things or certain locations in Marshall that you felt were needing to, you know, slow down the vehicle or maybe there were parks, maybe there were certain sensitive areas or neighborhoods where you say, hey, we just don't want scooters in this area. Well, that's easy for us. We can just turn on a no ride zone, which basically means that if a vehicle enters that certain area, it'll come down to a halt, it'll be inoperable and that person will have to take it back to that operating zone. So all things that we have had to deploy in really sophisticated cities that we can turn on in a place like Marshall. And when you're done here, I just want to showcase this on the right hand side. We do audit a lot of photos that if you've ever used the service before, when you're done riding it, you do have to take a photo of that vehicle. So it's a form of of social proof. It's photo proof for us. We can audit those photos. Oftentimes, cities like to see this to make sure that vehicles are ending up properly and we always have the right to suspend someone if we feel like there are any bad actors. The the pricing that you see here at the top, this is our standard pricing. So the the man on the right hand side that's unlocking the vehicle, when he does this, it'll cost the user $1. And then for every minute afterwards, it's roughly 25 cents. So that's where we see rides are typically anywhere from $5 to $7. But we do have a couple of different programs here. So we want to make sure that this is accessible to all different types of individuals. So if these are low income riders who are already enrolled or eligible for government assistance programs, they get discounts for us. If you're a veteran, if you're a senior citizen, if you're a healthcare worker, you in fact get to ride for free. So this isn't just for certain people. This isn't just for college students. This isn't for people of a certain age. We really hope that this is for everybody. We'll skip through a couple of these just in the interest of time. This right here is is a huge piece. If you take nothing away from from this presentation, please, please look at this. The way that we run businesses and and this is how we we enter into markets like Albert Lee, like New Ulm, like Mason City, like Fort Dodge, we would partner with somebody local. So this is an entity. This is a business or an entrepreneur who lives in Marshall, someone who understands their community, who understands the people. And of course, due to that want to see this succeed and and on our end, they're financially incentivized to make sure this succeeds. So we think that this combination is hugely critical to to us, but also for the city. So we have individuals there that are very responsive, very nimble, and because of their localization, they in effect can actually run the business better than we ever could. And they they address a lot of the concerns. I'm sure there's a lot of people sitting here that have I've seen these in other areas. And they'd say, hey, that it's it's very untidy. It's very, very cluttersome. This is what I've seen in in other cities. You know, that's not a real, a realistic scenario for a place like Marshall, just given the sheer volume and also the individual that would be performing this. You know, there's a lot of different things that we can do to to tackle or combat that untidiness. One, the city can can address this themselves. We've seen a lot of cities that stencil parking zones as a visual reminder for for riders. You know, we're going to do it on our own. We're going to provide tutorials and videos and notifications to remind and and teach riders how to park properly. We have a ton of different things where, you know, if you if you park in a certain area, we'll just give you credit for that. We'll give you money back on your ride. So there's a lot of things that we can do here to make sure that that we're addressing these clutter concerns because I know every person in this room, I'm I'm sure is is somewhat concerned about it. And the proposal is really cut and dry. The MOU has actually already been approved or the language has been approved already. We'd likely start with somewhere around 75 vehicles to start, which is a really calculated, really manageable number in 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 our opinion. Take a look at the demand. If it requires more vehicles, we can certainly do that. But we would love to get this program up and running as swift and as quickly as possible. Because we're already in the midst of these these summer months and as we know, in in places like Marshall, you get towards November and and up until almost even April. Weather's pretty bleak. So if we want to see the efficacy of this program, which really is just a pilot period, we would urge you to take action tonight, which means that vehicles could be in the road in in the coming weeks. So I will pause there though, as that was very long winded. I would love to not continue to talk and I will open up for for any questions.
Hey, thank you, Mike. Before we go to questions, Lauren, was there anything else you wanted to add?
I was just going to mention, and Mike mentioned it briefly, we have had the MOU reviewed by Dennis and he has made those adjustments according to what we would need in Marshall and that should be attached here packet for review.
We'll open it up for questions from the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Steve.
So I've ridden Bird. I think it's a great thing, you know, that a lot of people think, well, what about the safety? What about going in? The safety issue, I as a physician, some people get hurt on them. I mean, they're they're a vehicle, but it's like our bike, you know, our bikes that we have and that's another mode of transportation that we allow and that as a city, we were proposing and encouraging people to do. I think this is a really good variant and this brings us kind of into a more progressive city. You know, when you go into those zones, it's amazing. Those those machines will just shut down. And so, you know, like Mike said, if we decide we don't want these vehicles in certain areas, we just come to that decision and and it works. I mean, they they're done. They just stop. Like, what's going on? You know, and then you gotta walk it to a different spot or where most people will just say, I give up and they'll just park it and go from there. But I think it's a great thing. I think it's amazing that Marshall is getting an opportunity to do this. So I speak highly in favor of this.
Thank you, Steve. John?
Just a couple of questions on the the operation. You know, obviously these are going to be parked around all over. People use them. Is your manager then at, let's say at night or whatever, pick them up, move them back to those specific locations, I'm assuming doing the recharge? And well, I'll let you answer that. And I've got another question that I'm not totally sure on. It may not be directed to you, Mike.
Yeah. So so what this individual does, and this is a full time opportunity. This is someone who's running a business. So part of that expectation is that we work with them and we could also work with the City of Marshall if they choose to be hands on on determining those locations. You know, I I've never been to Marshall. I can look through Google Maps. I can probably find, you know, some locations to deploy these. But that entity or that local person, they'll know far better than we do, right? And so we want to lean on on their knowledge that they've likely accumulated throughout their time in the area. And by by doing so, you know, what we'll be able to pinpoint, I'm sure dozens of spots that we can deploy in the morning and reposition throughout the day. So if someone were to take this for a ride and ended up in front of someone's front yard or ended up in a business somewhere. or ended up in a, a business somewhere, or ended up in, near an apartment complex, well, that business who is running operations for us, it's their job to go and pick it up and bring it back to one of those locations. A, a location that we have deemed as probably having a higher likelihood of being ridden one more time, which of course behooves them, because they're actually sharing the revenue with us.
And the other question, I guess, just to be sure, these could not be ridden on the bike trails, or would they be able to be used up? Like, thinking, somebody take it to Camden and back.
That'd be an expensive ride.
Okay.
But hey.
If they want traces walking, that might be it.
Right.
My understanding is they are allowed on the bike trails, they're not allowed on the sidewalks, so they would be allowed in the parks, but not on the city sidewalks, if that makes sense.
They, they, I mean, they make sense as a bike, that they go on the bike trails, some of Camden Trails are bike trails. So as long as, you know, this is where as we get more and more traffic, and we become more and more twin cities-like, which is an awesome thing, bike trails are walking trails that you have to share. When I'm riding my bike, and I'm sure Mayor's riding his bike on the bike trail, we yield to pedestrians. If you give them warning, coming up on your left, or on your right, or where, you know, typically we're supposed to go on their left, they pass them, you just have to follow the rules of the road. Same thing in the city, if I'm driving down, and I'm on the bike path, and there's somebody running, gotta let them know that we're coming as best as we can and be cautious. We're driving, follow the rules of the road, obey the stop signs.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, probably Lauren referred to it. One of the staging areas is, is Main Street downtown, and yet we can't have these ride on the sidewalk. How do they get the, let's say, we have the location in front of the new City Hall building, how do they get the scooter from City Hall to a, a location that they can ride? Because we have no bike lanes in downtown Marshall. I mean, do they have to push it to Fourth Street, Third Street, whatever the case may be? Just kind of curious.
Yeah, they, they don't have to be, they don't have to be ridden in a bike lane. I'm sure you have bicyclists that are riding just on, on city streets. So they're, they're operating the same exact ways as a bicyclist would. We're merely using the public right-of-way to stage that vehicle, but once you pick it up and you're renting it, you're on the city street. So we don't want people to be on sidewalks, you're just running these the exact same way a bicycle would.
Mike, downtown, I mean, I don't know if we'd want these scooters on Main Street with, with truck traffic and everything through. I, I just see a, a concern with these scooters being on Main Street with, you know, on the sidewalk, because that's where they're going to have to be, unfortunately. I don't know where else they would be.
Or the back alleys, which is the access to. So Jim, you have a comment?
Well, I was just a comment, as I've made comments, I mean, I, I travel around, and I've been in some pretty busy areas where these scooters are, and I use, I think Duluth has scooters like this. They buzz right down Canal Park, and there's a lot of traffic down Canal Street. And I would say, I was, as you know, I was just in Florida, these are all over the place in Coke Beach.
Minneapolis, Omaha.
And they, they actually go down the sidewalks, because there is no room on the streets, and people are just courteous. Seattle, I think, when we were there a couple of years before the pandemic, they're popular out there too, and people seem to work well with these. I mean, you just work together, and I, I think even downtown, it would work, it would work just fine, no different than biking. So I think it's a great idea, and it's something that'll be a change for Marshall. So yes, for some people, it's going to be different, but change is good, progress is good.
Lauren, you have a, you may have some comments on the trial period about, you know, we will learn some things about, you know, what will work, maybe what, you know, we'll have to put some adjustments on it. How, how long of a trial period do you think? Would this be this summer, or if issues come up, we can address it, of course, anytime?
Right, and that was what I was going to mention, is the beauty of this program at this point is it is just a trial basis. So if it does not work, or adjustments, adjustments need to be made, we have that opportunity at the end of the trial period. Mike can probably speak better to it. I think originally, the goal was a six-to-nine month trial period. Of course, in Minnesota, we, in this late in the year, we likely won't get that six-to-nine months. But I think the goal would be to keep them out until maybe mid-October, early November, and that would be the end of our trial basis, when we need to pull them off the road. So we, that's probably flexible, that, that time period isn't set in stone because of where we're at in the year now, depending on how quickly we can get them out onto the street.
Other questions? If not, thank you, Lauren, thank you, Mike. You have a, a proposal before you, council, what's the wishes of the council?
I'm in motion to approve the proposal.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Steve, discussion. If not, Kyle, would you take the roll call vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Thank you very much. We'll move then to Agenda Number 17. This is a request for various adjustment permit by Todd and Barbara Raski, locations 400 West Southview Drive. I will call on Ilya Gutman to present. Ilya?
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is a request to build a larger deck in the house. The house is located in the corner of South Fourth and West Southview, and it currently has a four-foot deck, which projects from the existing front entry porch. The porch is already projecting six feet into the required front yard, and the, it makes the overall projection about 10 feet into the required front yard, and the ordinance allows only eight feet projection. What the owner wants to do is they want to rebuild the deck and make it wider, they want to go deeper, if you wish, they want to make it six foot deep, and they also want to have the steps going in the direction of the, uh, uh, street of Southview rather than along the house. So, as always, with the variance, it's governed by the statues in the ordinance, and approval requires presence of the practical difficulties, which are defined in the ordinance and in the statues, and we, it was presented many times. So based on this information, the staff believe that there are no practical difficulties. However, the planning commission recommended that the variance be granted to rebuild the deck with the same depth, however, allow the owner to have the stair going in the, in the direction to the street as they want to. So that's the recommendation of the planning commission. And the owner has given a present, so they can provide more information.
Hey, thank you, Ilya. Any comments from the planning commission, Todd?
I'll let the men speak for them, Kyle, I guess. They did have a fairly, I wouldn't say a lengthy discussion, they, they did have a, oh, oh, well, you know, they did cover it in 15 or 20 minutes, so they did take their time on it. In fact, the first motion that was made was defeated, and that was to allow four feet instead of the two feet, I think. They, they wanted to extend it two feet more than what's already there, and that was defeated on a four-to-three vote. So I think this is a, a compromise they've kind of come up with, and to me, I guess it seems reasonable.
Questions, uh, council may have, of either the planning commission or from Ilya?
I have actually a question for Dennis. On this, because we, we approve these, but if they can't prove practical difficulty, what, if a neighbor decides to push it, and we can't say we approve practical difficulty, can the city get into legal issues with this? And the reason I bring this up, and I goes back, because my daughter wanted to do an addition up in Duluth, we couldn't prove practical difficulty, they didn't even let it go to planning and zoning, they said, you can't prove it, we're not even going to waste her time.
You know, that's the standard, practical difficulty, that's often difficult to meet. Liability of the city in granting something about practical difficulty. I just have hard time figuring what the damages would be to the city by granting that, letting someone go to be in the space and short. But yeah, you're probably not following the law.
But there again, we have the ability to set what that space is in the, in the overall anyway, it's not like a, we're going against the national or a state standard. So it's a community thing again, and it, you know, and attitudes can change as often as neighbors change. But I think we still, you know, my premise is, is that without causing undue hardship to someone else, and I think they have to demonstrate the hardship beyond an opinion, I think people have the right to use their property too. And I agree with you, Don, I think it is a good compromise. I, I do like the compromise of the steps coming out front. I just, I know we always come up with this practical difficulty, and I, you know, I worked with another community, and they said, we're just, no. They just, they, like I said, they didn't go to planning, they just said, no.
House member Schaefer said it used to be undue hardship, but now it's practically safe.
But the city is not, but now could the neighbor save?
The neighbor could probably come back to the city and quit and grant.
And then that conditional use permit could get removed if they went to court. I just want to lay the facts out there.
My, my question, and I've served as councilman before, and I've been on the planning commission, my question is always, basically, are we cutting a new precedent? And that's what I always grapple with, is the precedent of what we're doing. Is that, is that proper, is it correct? But I, I, you know, the cred, use of one's property, you know?
Right.
And important as well, so.
And, and I think, Don, exactly to that point, I think, and I can think back to half a dozen of these that we've made, where because of the, the way the house was originally placed, or the way the property is configured, every one of these is a little bit different. And I think that's absolutely the perfect application of the variance in going through the process of, is it going to cause harm to another property? And I think, to me, that's really the litmus. If the answer is no, I think it's hard for us not to compel a beneficial use to someone. And to me, I just, I, I, I think you can add benefit to undue hardship or, or whatever. I just, it, to me, this is a really difficult application. And again, I just, I really think it's kind of, we've talked before about being friendly to the community and allowing people to have comfortable place. And I, so I support this whole process. I, I would never ask to have it changed, but to have it go to variance, because it forces people to think about, do I really want this? Is this something, because you make them go through the extra steps.
So, Don, you may want to clarify the recommendation from the planning commission, but the recommendation is that the deck is exactly the same size, the difference would be the projection of the steps leading from the deck.
That is correct. At, at the present time, if you look in the one window or picture, the, the steps actually go to the side along the house, and they want, what the planning commission is allowing them to do is to turn the step to face the street, to go down that little sidewalk to the street.
Yep.
Say it looks like there's a sidewalk there already.
The sidewalk is already there, yeah, it's just to align the steps with the sidewalk.
So it's a sidewalk to nowhere unless we fix this. Well, and like I said, I think it's a good compromise, and this is a tough property, because you have this discussion on corner lots all the time. You say we have two front yards, well, that's, is that fair to the corner lot always? I mean, I live on a corner lot, so I deal with this too. That's why we're unfair. If you weren't on there, we'd be way more. Your chances are on one. I, I would make a recommendation to approve as planning and zoning recommends to the city. I would second that. Or motion, excuse me.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig, to approve the recommendation coming from the planning commission. Discussion on the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I think, I, I'm not sure, but it may be Mr. Raski is in the, in the audience, we should probably hear from him, but I'm not sure if any of my fellow council members or the mayor went over and visited with them and seen this, but I think Councilman Lozinski probably brought it up. This is a corner lot, they do not have a backyard, so they want to build a deck in the front yard. There's been discussion about those, that concrete that's in the front, that concrete, that sidewalk was there originally. So they took it out when they put that small deck on, but if you go up to their front door and open up their screen door, you have absolutely no room to move the way it sits. I think Mr. Raski could probably live with the, with the deck the, the way it is, but he'd prefer it two feet bigger, so that he could have two steps down instead of, you know, whatever the case be. But I think that sidewalk has been there for a long time for going up to the front of the house, and I don't think we can, you know, ask them, and I think this is probably a compromise, but I would like to see the deck made two feet bigger, because again, you open up their screen door, there's absolutely no room on that deck or, or porch or whatever there to, to have a visitor come. But I think if Mr. Raski's in the audience, I think we should hear from him.
You have any comments on it, Mike?
Uh, thank you, council. I would like to address the fact that being on a corner lot that has no back outside living space, we already built the same thing in 1991. We did the exact same thing we're asking for right now. And when we redid, we built an addition, we did all the siding, we improved the property, you guys, we improved the property. We did all that, windows, siding, shingles, addition. They took away our deck. We were told we couldn't have it anymore, just the way we had it. And now we're just asking to have that same thing back. I want six feet from my front door, and we're going to go from there. This is not, there, there's not a line of sight issue. There's two houses on our block, he's up the street a little bit from us, little bit of a grade. I, I don't know where this is that big of an issue. We're not impeding on somebody having an accident by hitting our deck. If they're going to have an accident, they're eight feet on our yard. So I'm not really sure where there's an issue on this, I really don't. But we will abide by whatever the city council tells us we can do, so thank you very much.
Okay. Other discussion on the motion or?
I have another question. Jason, was there not a letter opposing this too, from a neighbor?
Yes, I believe in Ilya can maybe speak to that, we did receive one letter.
Yeah, there was one letter opposing the thing.
Hey, other discussion?
Can I ask, what was the main concern of this individual?
No, go ahead.
No. What were they? I mean, was there any particular aspect that they were, other than just, it comes out further than it, as intended?
I, I think one of the, one of the concern was setting a precedence. Uh, that's what the, one of the concerns was. I honestly don't remember the other one.
Todd?
But I, I don't think, at that moment, that concern looked very valid, even the second one, so that's probably why I don't remember that.
Right, Don.
I've got, you know, one more picture, and I guess, you know, I, when I looked at the, the night of the planning commission meeting, I guess I just focused on looking at the corner lot that the house had gone. But with my untrained eye, looking at it tonight versus the neighbor on the left of him, their garage sticks out farther than the, than the porch does. That one right there. Am I wrong in that, Ilya? Did the neighbor's garage, is that closer to the, the sidewalk and the street than their porch is?
I did not measure the thing, but I drove by, and the garage, maybe it's about the same as the porch, maybe a foot or two closer.
Councilman, it looks to be about the same distance.
Yeah, right.
You think so?
I guess the deck will project beyond that point.
Other discussion on the motion on the floor?
And again, fellow council members, they're not, they don't want to build a 16-by-20 deck. I mean, this is just an entryway into their house, an entryway into their house that they had in 1991, and they just want to put it back on. I, I don't think that's an unreasonable request.
Other discussion on the motion?
Just a question, oh.
John and then Craig.
Okay, at that point, is that why the sidewalk stopped where it was? Is that where the old deck, 1991 deck came up to?
But, um, so when, when we did all the reconstruction on our house, and they brought in a skid loader to take out, you know, our old deck, basically, they broke and they brought in a skid loader to take out, you know, our old deck, basically, they broke that other pad.
Oh.
That was there. Okay. So what you're seeing now on, on Google is two pads. There was a third pad where we brought the steps down to.
Okay.
But it was broken in the process of the reconstruction of our house, quite frankly. So, you know, when we did all that, you know, stuff to our house, yes, that was, but back and I know it's, you know, probably doesn't mean anything to anybody, but back before we did all this construction to our house, one hundred percent of the people that came to our house came up the front step. Because there was a single car garage and a breezeway that nobody came to. They came up our front steps. We want that back. That's, that's, you know. We've already had this, you know, we had what we wanted once. We, we, we just want the same thing back. I'm sorry, it was, that's just, all we want is the same thing back. Thank you.
Greg, just real quick, I'd like to just kind of address the, what, what's perceived as the precedent set. This is not the first time we've approved encroachment in the front yard. Okay, so there's, there's already precedent for us to do this. The concern right now is that we do have a motion on the floor. Correct?
We do have a motion on the floor and the motion on the floor is for the planning commission recommendation.
Right. So the question that I have, Don, to you is that the first motion was to allow the request as presented, correct? And then that failed on a four to three?
Well, died on a three to three vote.
Three to three vote, okay.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to act on the motion on the floor.
Just let's just, let's just let it take a. Yeah, the reason I don't, Don, is because there's a precedent. You have six feet out and you put those steps out. Those front steps are virtually on that sidewalk. It, it's not like we're encroaching a small ways into the front yard. And I know this is a difficult spot down here. It's, you know, it's a four-foot deck. You bring those steps out the front. There's a lot of room on those steps. I build those little decks all the time. So there is a lot of room there and I think it's a good compromise. And somebody who came off of planning and zoning, planning and zoning put time into this and they put thought into this and I, and they drove, I drove by the property. I think with the steps coming out front, I think that's a good compromise the city is making on their ordinance. Sometimes you all have to compromise, so I think it's a good compromise.
Respectfully, Mr. Lizinski, I, I, you know, the steps aren't gonna be on the sidewalk. You've got a, you've got a third slab that has to be laid down. Those steps are gonna come off that deck onto that first, that slab that was broken that's not there presently. Those steps are not gonna go onto the sidewalk.
Any other discussion on the? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
No.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
No.
Russ Lebath?
No.
Jim Lizinski?
Yes.
So the motion does?
Motion does pass.
Does pass. Motion does pass. We'll move then to Gen I number eighteen. This is a request for a conditional use permit for a daycare facility by the Church of Holy Redeemer at five hundred South Whitney Street. Once again, Ilya, goodbye.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Uh, we all know that the daycare has been in that building for a very long time. And what started this thing was the request from the Department of Human Services, uh, that the city confirms that daycare is compliance with the ordinance. Uh, after checking the ordinance, uh, I realized that there was no, uh, conditional use permit, which is required by the ordinance for all daycares in residential, single residential district, over fourteen kids. Uh, so, uh, the request was made and, uh, uh, the city believes it's reasonable and the commission's approval of the conditional use permit.
Hey, Don, any comments from the planning commission?
No, there were none.
Any questions from the council on this? Is there a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve with, under the condition stated.
Motion by John, seconded by Don. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebath?
Yes.
Jim Lizinski?
Yes.
And motion passes. Gen I number nineteen is the request for a conditional use permit for a school at R one residential district. Once again, Ilya.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Council. So this came up at the same time because when I looked at the, uh, uh, daycare, I realized that there was no condition use for the school either. And, uh, of course, we just passed a condition use permit recently for the new, uh, uh, elementary school. So condition uses required for all schools in the single family residential districts. Obviously, the school is there and no one is planning on doing anything. So it's this grandfathered in the way it is. But, uh, since, uh, the owner was going through the process of applying for a condition use permit for the daycare, uh, it was reasonable to run the, the, the condition use permit for school concurrently and save the owner some money. So, uh, uh, the recommendation is to approve this, uh, conditional use permit as well.
Thank you, Ilya. Any questions about this from the council?
So I have a question because this school's been here eighty years. So this school has been operating not correct or in a, not zoned correctly for eighty years. I mean, to me, it's, I read this, it's like.
I mean, your diploma is no longer valid.
So, I mean, I, I have, I have no problem with it. But, um, with, the only question I would have is if the school had ever go away in the next eighty years, this won't prohibit what they would do with that property. They could just turn it back in the house, whatever, correct?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead.
Basically, what happened is that the school was built before the ordinance really took effect. So, uh, that's why I said it was definitely grandfathered in. Uh, they don't need a, a condition use permit now. Uh, and the only reason they may need it is if they decide to build a addition or do a significant interior remodel. So, as I said, uh, it's just a convenience and for the owner to have it on file so that if something comes up later on, it's already there. I mean, it's just, and again, they didn't, uh, uh, since it's done at the same time as the other one, they didn't pay anything for this thing. So that's, it's just, uh, to a degree, it is formality, but it's, uh, to make it, uh, better for the owner.
Okay. With that being said, I'm making a motion to approve it so my diploma becomes legal.
I have a question.
Your take, I'll second it. Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I, there were no comment on the, at the planning commission meeting. But in, in, uh, thinking about this just a little bit, um, three to four years ago, there was a major, what I would think, a major remodel job at that school. And, and nothing was done at that time, uh, to bring it into compliance. So just something for people to think about.
Nobody wanted to challenge Jim's diploma back then.
Any other discussion on the motion?
And Mr. Mayor, that's my question to Ilya. I said, they did that probably two million dollar remodeling project a couple of years ago. That's extensive remodeling. Just curious why this wasn't caught then?
Because, uh, that, that thing did not come into play because at that time they were doing mostly mechanical and replacement of windows and the, the doors. So that's why, as I said, when I said extensive interior modeling, reconfiguring spaces and enhancing the, uh, function. In that case, they would, mostly it was just maintenance.
But it says in the first paragraph, it says if an addition or significant remodeling will take place. I think they did significant remodeling.
But significant remodeling is not necessarily based on the evaluation. It's based on what they're doing.
This has been zoned wrong for eighty years. So I, do they have to pay the three or six hundred dollars?
No, that's what I said. They, they did not have to pay for this thing.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion on the motion?
I, I would think when, when a building permit is pulled, I would assume they, they got a building permit, correct?
Yes, correct.
That maybe when the building permit was pulled, that maybe it might have been a little, should have been a little bit of a red flag. So just to do a little checking, maybe a little more background on some of these things, uh, in the future.
But then, as I said, uh, they, it was not that type of remodeling that would require, uh, the condition use permit. It was, uh, the ordinance requires a, uh, full, full compliance if it is enhancement of the function. In this case, there was no enhancement.
Hey, thank you, Ilya. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, is, we will move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebath?
Yes.
Jim Lizinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Gen I number twenty, consider signing a contract with SRF for the, uh, City Marshal twenty twenty-one comprehensive plan. Do you have this, Sharon?
I think I will take this one, too.
Okay, Ilya, you have this?
Yes. So, uh, uh, we went, uh, came to the council several times with this thing. First, we got authorization to advertise or request a proposal. And then, uh, we got, we received proposals, we went through the, uh, all the evaluations. We selected the, uh, the winner for recommendation to the council and we came to the council with their proposal. What happened is that, uh, after that was approved, we, uh, in our conversation with, uh, uh, SRF and the reviewing of their, uh, description of work, we noticed that the number of hours was lower than it was listed in the proposal. So we felt that we had to review, it was significantly lower. So we felt that we had to review it all over again, basically. So, uh, we, uh, had a conversation with this SRF. We had a conversation with the, uh, the evaluation, uh, committee, uh, members. And, uh, SRF came up with the revised scope of work. They added, uh, significant, uh, number of hours to, uh, be much closer to the, uh, number of hours listed in the, uh, their proposal. Uh, they, we also reviewed the, uh, the, the work description, the scope of work for other items and revised it in order to reflect better our values and our intent, for example, with the, uh, public participation. So, uh, still believes right now that, uh, the scope of work and the contracts, they will probably have to Dennis to comment on the contract, uh, is appropriate. And we are requesting approval to approve the, uh, uh, final, uh, contract with them for the cost of sixty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars, an additional five thousand dollar contingency.
Hey, questions for Ilya?
I move approval.
Seconded.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Don. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebath?
No.
Jim Lizinski?
Yes.
Motion passes. Gen I number twenty-one, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Betterment's, uh, project authorization related to the Marshall flood control project. Jason Anderson, our city engineer director of public works.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so this project has been kind of a long time coming. And I know that, uh, at times we kind of wonder where, where it was standing. But we finally got into the point where the Corps of Engineers levy repairs and improvements project has been, uh, bid and, and they received four bids. Uh, so that's, that's a good thing. I will spare the council the details of kind of the history of where we, where we were and how we got here. I think it's all in the memo and we've talked about it quite a few different times. But to summarize it, this process started in twenty nineteen where we noticed some slope failures along our flood control project. Uh, we reviewed them with the Corps of Engineers, went through, uh, a bunch of different reviews and different, uh, analysis on who would be responsible for, uh, different things. Uh, we, we got to the point where we agreed that sites number one and three, the, the two on the left of the screen, the furthest left, would be covered in their entirety by the Corps of Engineers. Those two locations are the most severe where the washout is starting to impact the levee prism at site number, I think it's called site number three. It shows site number two, I guess. So one and two. So site number two, the, the levee prism is being compromised and it's, uh, site number one. We're not very far away from it being compromised. So the Corps of Engineers has stepped up and said that'll be our responsibility or their responsibility. Area three shown on that same page and then area six in the lower right of the screen. Uh, those two locations are, are the entire, the entire cost is the city's responsibility. So we had the Corps of Engineers bid the project in a manner where the base bid was the first two sites that they would do regardless. And the city would have the option on the other two locations. So, uh, at, at the January twenty-sixth meeting, the council gave us that authorization to bid the project in that manner. So on May eighteenth, the Corps opened up bids. And as I mentioned earlier, they received four with one bid from, uh, one of our local contractors. The low bid was provided by, I'll probably, uh, butcher the name, but Cowvillik Construction of Franklin Park, Illinois. Obviously, we're not familiar with the contractor. They're from quite a ways away, but the Corps of Engineers will go through their process of, of vetting and approving, uh, the contractor. I, I do believe this contractor has a history of working on some federal Corps of Engineers projects. So, um, when it comes down to staff's recommendation, you know, ultimately, we have a few different options as a, as a city. We can choose to award none of the locations or we can award one or the other or both at, at varying costs. We've already paid the Corps of Engineers a little over one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this project, uh, of which they've used just about twenty-one thousand for design services. So that we're, we're left with about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of funds to date. If we were to award both alternates, we would, I, I did some checking today to be sure, but we would need to come up with only the construction costs. So we would need to come up with an additional sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars to pay to the Corps to do the project. And then we'd be responsible for any overages in quantity if that were to occur. So in reviewing the sites as, uh, city staff, uh, it is our recommendation that the council elects to reject the bid alternate sites with the city cost participation uh, and authorize the city staff to review maybe some smaller remedies at those other two locations to maybe buy us some time in those washout areas. The reason for that recommendation is those other two washout areas that are on, on our responsibility. The reason they are our responsibility right now is that they're, they're a little ways away from the levee. The actual levee itself is probably fifty feet away or greater at both locations. The reason we call attention to them, to the Corps of Engineers, is the washouts were starting to compromise the core project where we would, uh, anticipate that more riprap would start to fall in and it would start to deteriorate our project and eventually work its way toward the levee. The way the public law works, the Corps of Engineers cannot participate in that project at this time because it's not directly compromising the, uh, integrity of the flood protection. But, uh, we think that if we were to do a smaller project, maybe put some rock into some of those washout areas that we could probably do a reasonable job in normal weather times of protecting the project. And in the event that there's a larger washout, we could look to readdress it with the Corps of Engineers. So I've kind of rambled a lot about this, uh, proposal and this project, but if there's any questions, I can certainly entertain those.
Hey, thank you, Jason, and, uh, and thank you to your staff for, uh, working with the Corps on this project. And I think you also, the two previous discussions and our own personal knowledge, the two, uh, areas that are, will be covered fully by the Corps of Engineers are the most, um, um, threatening for the city and the, and flood control and that, that there would be risk of losing the flood protection and that this is not addressed by the Corps of Engineers, which is why the Corps isn't paying the full cost of this. Comments, questions?
I have a quick question for Jason. On the bid, and since we, we, you recommend rejecting, I find it that. Is this bid as a prevailing wage project where if we separated out our two odd sub, uh, projects that you separated out there, would not have to go prevailing wage such we can get a more favorable bid?
That's correct. Uh, this is a federal prevailing wage project. If we pull it out and do, uh, any of our own maintenance operations or hire or quote some contract work, we would not have to pay prevailing wages on that. And we would probably do a much lesser project than what the Corps was proposing. We would do a much smaller, uh, stabilization project just to try to buy some time.
And the, the base bid for the Corps of Engineers, what they're covering, that also covers the restoration of the bike trail on top of the levee?
That is correct. Yeah. They will need to access the site and they'll have to bring the bike trail locations that they disturb back into, uh, standard.
What happens with the remaining balance that we already paid towards the Corps? Where does that money go? Does it just stay there?
Uh, thank you, Councilman. I should have mentioned that. They would refund the city the remaining balance of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents. I would ask the council with their recommendation for, uh, some approval to use some of those funds to. to look at some sort of minor armoring project there, that we just try to do something to stop the washout.
Any other questions? If not, you have the recommendation?
I move that we reject the two, we approve the, the agreement with the Army Corps and that we reject the two.
Alternates?
Alternates and that we then direct our staff to work on the modified actions to protect those two pieces that we reject out of this.
I'll second that.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion on the motion? Jason, the, if the council was to move forward with the alternates, that becomes part of the future maintenance responsibilities of the Corps of Engineers.
It would become part of what they consider the flood control project. We would have to maintain it, but in the event that it was damaged, they would cover it in the future. And if the council happens to change your mind, you have until, I think, the end of July to throw the alternates in the project.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? If not, Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lazzinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda number 22, consider the collection of the 2021 on sale intoxicating liquor fees, Kyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last November, council took action to waive the first half of 2021 liquor license fees for all of our on sale license holders. Those include on sale liquor licenses, wine, taproom and on sale 3.2% beer. That motion did have in there for staff to come back in May to determine, have the council determine what the second half of fees would be, whether that would be to collect fees or waive or prorate. So that's why we're back here tonight. In the background material, you can see historically what we forgave in 20, or reimbursed, rather, in 2020 to those on sale license holders and then with the fiscal impact, just breaking out what we would normally collect in a quote unquote "normal" year per license fees and what we've forgiven to date. So I can provide additional information if there's any more questions, but really just turning it to you.
And the space limitations are no longer in effect as of May 28?
Correct.
What's the wishes of the council?
Um, I, you know, I looked at this and I thought about this and I think we should implement the second half simply because these organizations have also received a lot of extra federal funding help, you know, PPP, EDIL loans and other things to help them get through this and they're back in business. They're back open, they're back running. I've been out, went out for dinner today of this two establishment that does also sell alcohol, they're busy. So I think it, it's time, we always say I get back to normal, part of normal is paying your fees. I think it's time to get back to normal. So I would support the 50% for the second half.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Yeah, good.
I want to agree, second.
I don't, Don seconded, motion by Jim, seconded by Don. Don, discussion on the motion?
Well, that's probably true, Councilman Lazzinski. I think the bigger, and we've got another issue that not only these businesses are facing, but businesses that you are probably owners in too, that was brought up at our CVB meeting, that nobody can find help. In fact, one of the hotels in town said that they can only open up half their rooms because they can't find help to clean the rooms on the weekends. So I think that's a problem that I think all businesses are having and including these here, that you can't find help to work.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
No.
Jim Lazzinski?
Yes.
Motion passes. Agenda number 23, consider appointments to various boards and commissions. The, prior to this meeting, the council did meet in special session, interviewed applicants for boards and commissions and based on the, the interview and application, I would recommend that Stacy Frost be appointed to a second term on the Economic Development Authority that will expire May 31, 2027. Offer that as a recommendation, entertain a motion to affirm.
Just to verify then, here's us to an unexpired term, this is to a second term.
To a second term, yes.
I would make that motion.
Motion by John, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Craig, discussion? If not, Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lazzinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Commission board liaison reports, the Southwest Regional Development Commission had their May meeting as well as their annual levy public hearing and there was no info whatsoever on that. So that's my report for this evening. Craig?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Done?
Um, we had, did have our planning commission meeting and I think we addressed all of those issues tonight.
Well, okay, John?
EDA meets tomorrow. They postponed their meeting a week. MMU did meet and there's two items just to bring to your attention, one of which was Missouri River Energy Services, our supplier, did some work, there's a number of communities that were incorrectly charged for transmission rate and they want to work and basically recoup that money, that excess that was charged to communities. Marshall was one of them. Marshall is getting a refund from about the 2018 forward range on excess transmission charge, the tune of about $435,000. Since it's going to be very difficult for MMU to determine which customers were part of that, contributed to that, rather than try to reimburse that back to the customers like they've done previously, they've decided to use that money plus some excess from bond reserves and pay off one of their bonds that's coming due this, or they would call it this year and pay it off early. So that was one of the things that was agreed on. They also did a reorganization of the commission, the usual switch around of appointments and chairpersons. So they made that change. And then the last item is one thing that I think we mentioned to the MMU as well, that we really need to toot our horn on. They took a look at the electrical rates. Unfortunately, it only go, 2019 is the most recent that they can get. And out of 121 Minnesota communities, the average revenue per kilowatt hour, in other words, what did they charge per kilowatt hour on an average for Marshall? Out of the 121 cities, Marshall is the lowest out of there. Lowest out of the bunch and this includes, I mean, Arlington, Washington, Barret, Benson, now you go through the list, all through Minnesota. If you look at the, you know, and a lot of that is because our industrial rates are very good and it brings down our average, but even if you look at the residential rates, we're in the lower 10 of those and three of them are the same level that we're at. So seven, eight, uh, seven, eight, nine, eight, nine and 10 would be all the same number with seven below that. So we are in very good condition or position as far as our revenue rates. Little bit different on the water, but we know that a lot of changes, a lot of improvement been made on the water, but we're still sitting 24,031 in that. So we're, you know, sitting pretty good on that. I just bring that up that Marshall is an excellent place to get your power from. So and it's the average, it's the lowest in really any area.
Well, thank you, John. Any other?
That's it.
Jim?
I have nothing, I was just memorized by John's speech on power. Memorized or mesmerized? That too.
Well, or both.
Or both. We're just glassy eyed.
We'll move then to council member. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Russ. I, I.
That's all right, I, I, I was not opposed, not offended by forgetting me, Mr. Mayor. CVB did meet and they talked about the Red Baron office space, maybe considering that, talked about the successful shades of the past role and that was held on May 6th and also their traveling trivia, the trivia continues to be a success. They have held one at the Marshall Golf Club and they also held one at the after prom and they, they had a skating after prom which went over very well as well. My community transit, Air Marshall Air Transit Committee met, working on a new mission and vision statement and the other thing is that we're looking at putting in some bus shelter graphics on, I think I mentioned that at the last meeting on, on the bus shelter that's on Fourth Street across from Heritage. I guess we're having quite a few birds that are flying into that structure and not surviving. So we're going to look at putting up some, some graphics in those two, in that facility, in that area. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Russ. We'll move then to council member individual items, Jim?
Um, just a few comments I have and this is credit to you, Jason, if you're still online. I was, you know, driving around town because I check my different crews and cool off because my truck is air conditioned and they're not. The, you know, the road destruction we have going on in town already before Memorial Day, we have overlays going on in Parkway. We have, I believe it's over by the golf course that they have those roads milled, ready to go. And in the past, it seems like this stuff didn't get going till July 1st. So, and maybe I'm wrong, but it feels like the middle of July, all the activity is going on in Marshall on this construction site and it's not even Memorial Day yet. So I want to give Jason credit that, you know, we've asked to get on ahead of the schedule. I think he did a wonderful job of doing that this year.
Thank you, Councilman, and I've got to ask most of that along to our team. Everybody's been right up on it and we got everything let early. I agree with you, it's really nice to see.
Very good, that's all. John, done, Russ?
I, I guess, Mr. Mayor, I would concur what Mr. Lazzinski said about the road construction. I know that it's better to have this stuff start in, in April and May instead of September. So other than that, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Done? Uh, just a shout out to Kyle, appreciate, um, getting a few of the, the minutes into the pack at this time and hope to see a few more as time goes on. But I appreciate it, thank you.
And Craig?
Nothing, thanks.
We'll move then to staff reports, city administrator, Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I don't have a lot because we may, I may comment more on city hall schedule, but I will begin discussions on aquatic center financing and probably have some community conversations, groups, individuals, so forth, and just kind of get the word out and get some feedback. I also still want to have the city pursue a community survey, a scientific community survey and get feedback. And I have two proposals and I plan on bringing that recommendation to the June 8 council meeting. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll just give a couple of high points on the construction projects. The milling overlay, as Councilman Lazzinski pointed out, is well underway on all the local routes. They're paving some Parkway streets today and hopefully by sometime towards the end of next week, we're done with the city routes. All the ADA work is completed, all the milling work should be completed now. Now it's just a matter of getting the paver in here. They had some time today to do some. I don't know if we'll see them back tomorrow, it might be next week before we see them back, we'll, we'll see. The state aid overlay should begin on June 7th, that week. They'll come in and start doing a lot of ADA sidewalk ramp improvements. So we look for that to start in a couple of weeks here. Seal coat project, June 3rd is what we're being told for a start date. The residents should see no parking signs showing up on June 1st. North First Redwood Marshall is progressing really nicely. The weather's been obviously favorable for construction and D and G's having a lot of success getting quite a bit of work done. I believe they were working down First Street with utilities today and there's, they're getting down there on the utility work. They're really getting through it, so that's good. James in Camden, some pipe was delivered today, some tree removal has been happening on James and as Councilman Lazzinski pointed out, the street was reclaimed today as well. So we are still under the impression our contractor will be here early next week to start the pipe work across the golf course. So we're hopeful with that. I think the only other thing I would mention is a reminder to everyone to adjust your water softeners. You should have gotten a notice in your last utility bill, you'll get another one with your next utility bill that advises that the water be, we're, we're telling folks June 1st after June 1st to make the adjustment, but for all intents, you could do it now, the water being delivered is softer. So make adjustments to your water softeners to reflect eight grains of hardness.
Thank you, Jason. Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, just a couple of updates as, as Mr. De Kramer indicated, we are, the EDA is meeting tomorrow. At the conclusion of the EDA meeting, we'll be closing on the sale of Parkway property to Brian and Kelly Jones. City council has approved their petition to move in a home out there. So they're closing on the purchase of the property tomorrow, then they'll be moving that home in later this summer. Continue to monitor, as we talked about earlier, the border states property. We'll have the public hearing on the best top soil in a couple of weeks. Bird scooters, comprehensive plans, swimming pool planning consultant, all those contracts have been reviewed and approved. And then the League of Minnesota Cities is sponsoring a use of force seminar. There have been changes made at the legislative level to police officer use of force. That seminar is scheduled for Thursday of this week, an hour and a half in the morning. So I will be attending that and then bringing that information to Chief Marshall, so.
Okay, thank you, Dennis.
Yep.
We'll move then to the remaining items on the agenda, which include the information items, the building permits. And agenda number 30 is the city hall schedule update. I'm going to turn to Councilmember Lazzinski, who also served as the chair of the Building Committee, Municipal City Hall Building.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, city hall, first of all, I don't want to make this honestly a negative report. The city halls, we have a beautiful structure, it's gone fairly well. Things are coming together nicely. We're a bit behind schedule now. Why, I don't know. I was actually busy with Sharon, say, busy with the contractor, little bit of timelines here. We're supposed to take possession of the building on May 3rd. As of today, we have not taken possession of the building yet. Part of the reason why is, as you guys handed out, we have a little list of punch item, punch list items. Everything with a red star is a life safety issue that has to be complete before we can take possession of the building and let the public in. I visited Ray about this, I don't believe the city should be treated any different than any other contractor. It is what it is. With that being said, Sharon, I and Ray got ahold of Andy from Aingan and stressed to him very much, Sharon would like to move in July 3rd, excuse me, June 3rd, June 4th. I think it's a pipe dream, but that's our shot right now is to try to get in there. We made it very clear to Andy that he needs to get ahold of contractors, that this is what we want to do. That he needs to start pushing, Brennan, that we need to get these life safety issues down so we can get use of our building. We want to stop renting out the college. So with that being said, as you can see here, there is, there's, you know, and it's a big project. So it may look like an extensive list for a project this size, it's not out of normal. So, but there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done. With that, I know I've said all along, I hope that we can get together for a June 8 city council meeting. We're still hoping with that because if we can get in, if we can get the temporary certificate of occupancy. Visit with Alex today, he said that the technology should be set up. He's shaking his head back there, yes, kind of yes, no. So if the technology is set up and we have a temporary certificate of occupancy, my hope is still June 8th. I'd put it at probably about a 50/50 shot, to be flat honest with you. So it, it, other than that, it is going well, there are a few issues. a few issues we're still working through. There, there's yes, there's going to be a couple more change orders coming down the line. There's a couple of them that we are working with the contractor. There, there was a, I shouldn't say a change order, but it's an add-on for winter heat for the brick up front that we are in discussions with, uh, the contractor on. And there's, um, a couple other change orders were, which were in discussion with contractor on. Hopefully they're not extensive. Um, other than that, things are going well with a, a small, a few small tweaks. Um, I am going to let, actually turn over to John to give us an update on AV because I know nothing about technology and, and John handled that out of our committee because he's a wizard.
Uh, fortunately Kyle and Alex were taking the lead on that one for the most part. Uh, the, today they met with the company putting in the equipment. I think it's, uh, pretty safe to say everything is in. Looking back at Alex to say, not quite yet, uh, uh, it's getting there. But, uh, quite a bit of the equipment is in. They are in the process of doing the programming, setting it up, uh, testing it out. And, uh, last I heard is possibility of next week, some training on it or maybe the week after for sure. I think they're, they're that close to it. The thing is, everything is there, coming along pretty well. But it does take some time to program everything and get everything in and running. So make sure everything's there. And, uh, as long as all the equipment there, like tricasters, I think we're in good shape. So.
Um, I know on the furniture side of it, uh, City Administrator Hanson's been handling that. And I would just like to say before she speaks, I told you so. So Ms. Hanson? I, uh, I will let you give us an update on furniture.
Sometimes I hear that from Councilmember Wazinski. Um, yeah, we've, we, uh, worked with the local, um, office supply, Office One, they've been great. And, uh, we've had most of our furniture delivered. We did have some delays. There are some chairs around back order. And they're going to be arriving later this week. They also had delivery issues. Um, I know Councilmember LaBatt mentioned labor shortage. As most of you know, truck, truckers and the trucking industry is, is challenged as well. And, um, I'm not saying that was the exact issue, but, um, we did have some delivery issues. So, uh, we're hoping by the end of this week, all the furniture will be, um, installed and delivered or at the latest, early next week. So, um, I know that when the City Hall Committee reviewed furniture, Councilman Wazinski said, we must order this as soon as possible because of that situation of maybe things not being available. So he was right. And I'll put that on the record. So, thank you.
Get that in minutes. What, number, first time or second? Second. Oh, okay. No, um, it's going well. I mean, like I said, I, I don't want to make this sound like a negative report because things are going well. It's, our hopes and dreams are still June 8th. Like I said, it's fifty-fifty. I, I wouldn't be disappointed if we're not. But I, I hope we're all there together June 8th.
And Russ, the other member of the Building Committee, any comments you have?
I, I would just like to, um, give a, a pat on the back or a hat, hats off to our local building official. He's been putting in numerous, numerous hours down there, even before all these things came to light. I mean, he was been, been down there on weekends and nights cleaning up and things like that. Just a hats off to him because he's doing a yeoman's job and, uh, it just goes to show that he's not treating the city any different than, than any of the other contractors or businesses or individuals out there. We can't move into that building until what he feels life safety issues are addressed and taken care of. And, and that's what we're going to do, whether and Jim, whether that's June 8th or whether that's, uh, June 28th. I hope it's not June 28th, but, you know, we're just going to take his advice on it. But I'd like to just personally and, and publicly thank him for all of his work.
So I know that, uh, you know, staff and the public is anxious to occupy the building and use the new City Hall building. But obviously we want to be sure it's safe and done right, that the contractor has completed their work before we move in. So should we, uh, be in for the regular City Council meeting on June 8th? One of the things that I know Kyle and I visited about is probably many of us may need a refresher course on the technology that we use for the, uh, paperless board meetings because we haven't used that since, um, um, the first meeting of March of 2019. And Don, of course, you, uh, you weren't on at that time. So we probably will need to have a short work session just to kind of reorientate ourselves. So whether that's for the June 8th meeting or for the meeting two weeks after that. Yes.
And Russ, we'd love to have you join us here on June 8th.
The other issue that we will need to address is that, um, you know, we have the, uh, action that our emergency operations plan for the City of Marshall really follows the governor's, um, emergency declaration. Uh, when, you know, we hope that that ends. Um, but if the, if the state doesn't end, if they extend the governor's uh, emergency authority, very likely I would suggest that we end ours when we move back into City Hall, because then we'll be back in person, no space limitations. And we will not be at the Emergency Operations Center any longer. Any other things, any other questions about the progress of the City Hall? If not, I think we should say thank you to the City Hall Building Committee. Thank you to the key staff that have put in so many hours and. We're not in that.
Thanks, Greg.
So with that, the, um, um, you have the listing of the upcoming meetings. Is there anything else to come forward at this meeting? Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to adjourn discussion? If not, by voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned.